Good evening, and we're glad to talk to the 20th day of the 2020 Board of Commissioners September 21st, 2020, Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I would like to read an invocation from the Reverend David A. Friar from All Saints Episcopal Church from Southern Shores, North Carolina. May we gather in prayer. As we begin our prayer this evening, let us take a moment in silence to remember the Reverend Thomas Murphy Jr., who passed away on August 16th in Rodanthe. Tom will be remembered as the founding pastor of the Roanoke Island Presbyterian Church, but very importantly, as a tireless public presence who, in the words of his obituary, fought to correct injustice wherever he saw it and sought to be a force for good in the world. He was a regular attendee of the Board of Commissioners at the Board of Commissioners meeting, a member of numerous public advisory councils, task force, and was the leader of this prayer ministry to the commission. I recognized this at one of our recent meetings, and the Reverend Friar is once again honoring Tom Murphy. He asked for a moment of silence, so I will certainly grant that if you guys will give a moment of silence. As we gather in prayer remembering the life of Tom Murphy, may we also ask that God be with this commission during these very challenging times. Oh Lord, you have created us and all our diversity, and you have placed us in community, in particular, in this beautiful oceanfront community called Dare County. We have been blessed in many ways. We are gathered here this evening to do the work of governing, the challenge of bringing together this wonderful diversity into a nurturing community, a place where all can live and grow. This evening, be with those who have been elected to serve our community as its governors. Keep them mindful of the task of unifying, caring, and nurturing each of our fellow citizens. Be with them in their deliberations, give them ears to hear clearly, minds to think clearly, and a spirit of service dedicated to the common good. At the same time, be with all of our fellow citizens, particularly those who have suffered the ravages of the coronavirus. May we be responsive to the leadership of these, our elected leaders. May we also share in our personal lives the same tasks and goals that we have entrusted to our leaders. May we be blessed, and may we all serve the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
May we stand for the pledge.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make everyone aware that Commissioner Couch is with us virtually this evening due to NC-12's closure. So Commissioner Couch, thank you for joining us virtually. Also, I'd like for you to, the board, to know that Commissioner Ross is not able to be with us this evening. I hope that you will keep him and his wife in your thoughts and prayers. His wife had to go undergo some surgery this morning, so please keep him and his wife, Charlotte, in your thoughts and prayers. So with that being said, County Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. Got a number of items to try to make the public aware of this evening. COVID-19, we continue to deal with that locally as many as this entire nation does. Over the last number of weeks, Dare has seen a lower number of new COVID-19 cases as compared to where we were certainly in July and early August. It's encouraging, but this certainly can change quickly, and just over the last seven or eight days, we've seen an increase of about 26 cases. So I want to continue to ask everyone to be responsible and to continue to follow the three Ws to certainly help reduce the spread. Wear a mask, a cloth face covering, if you will, if you're with other folks. Wait six feet apart, avoid certainly the close contact, and wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If you have any questions with respects to COVID-19, I can direct you to visit darenc.com/covid19 for more detailed information. And if you have specific needs, you can certainly call our number at 252-475-5008, and we're certainly open from Monday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Earlier this last week, Dare County released a survey seeking input from local business owners and employers regarding their employee housing needs. For years, we've heard from many of you about how difficult it is for employees and potential employees to find suitable housing, and it's clear that more diverse residential options are needed to support our local businesses. To that end, Dare County has engaged the Development Finance Initiative at UNC Chapel Hill School of Government to identify opportunities for housing development. And the effort requires gathering additional information from specific housing needs of our workforce, which means the survey results are an important part of the process. So I encourage you as Dare County business owners and employers to complete this survey, if you will, and that can be found at darenc.com/employerhousingsurvey. So please, if you will, take a few moments to answer that survey. Also, this, just last week, mainly this week, the beginning of this week began to make way for our certainly COA Dare campus along Highway 64. If you drive by, you'll see the fencing that's already up, and over the next few weeks, heavy equipment will begin removing the building that previously served as Manio Middle and Manio High Schools. Many of you who grew up here have shared some of the wonderful memories that were made in that building, and as plans progress and the construction of the new building begins just in a few months, one thing's for sure, the long history of providing education at this site will continue, and the new campus will bring some amazing opportunities for people pursuing an associate's degree or technical trade skill right here in their own hometown. Weather conditions, don't think I have to speak too much about this in the last week or so. I ask everyone to certainly continue to pay attention to updates of weather forecasts. This is proving to be a very, very active hurricane season, and while we hope that another storm will not directly impact us, we know that even storms that stay offshore or those that move through our area after making landfall somewhere else can certainly bring extreme conditions as we have experienced just in the last few days, such as flash flooding, coastal flood advisories, ocean overwash. Perfect example now, as we have seen on Highway 12 south of the Bass Night Bridge these past few days. And so stay informed, be prepared, and certainly have a plan to keep you and your family safe, if you will certainly pay attention to the weather forecast. The lawsuit, one of the, the second lawsuit that we had received, Blackburn recently, the U.S., the United States District Court, Louise F. Flanagan entered an order on September the 15th to dismiss the matter. So we have no outstanding lawsuits at this time concerning our evacuations that we did a number of months ago. As the county, just like the nation, mourns the loss of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who passed away this past Friday. Ginsburg was a feminist icon to many, dedicating her life to public service and advocacy for social justice and gender equality. She was the second woman appointed to the Supreme Court of the United States, where she served for more than 27 years. Out of respect, the governor has issued flags to be flown at half-staff as well as the president nationwide. Individuals, businesses, and schools and municipalities, counties are encouraged to fly their flags at half-mast for the duration of, out of respect for Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And last but not least, Dare County still, NCDOT still has NC-12 closed until probably sometime tomorrow. We've gotten a triple whammy out of this weather conditions that's caused severe dune loss and ocean overwash along NC-12, causing them to have to close the road in two particular locations between Mark Bass Night Bridge and Rodanthe on Hatters Island, and of course, between the National Parks Service Pony Pins and the Furry Terminal on Ocracoke. It's still closed to traffic. NCDOT crews have been working since Saturday to clear the road of sand and water while we're building the dune lines when conditions permit, and tide cycles have slowed even a little bit, that's slowed their progress from opening the road. So they have approximately two dozen personnel out there, along with a number of front-end loaders and excavators and graders working to open the road. Most of you know that they work very, very diligently, even as the water's coming across the dunes and the road, they're out there working. So my hat's off to NCDOT and all their efforts they're trying to do to get NC-12 open back up. And just an FYI, we put this out earlier this afternoon, trash collection has been rescheduled for Rodanthe, Way, Salvo, and Avon. Typically, the trash collection would normally be, take place on Tuesday, which would be September the 22nd, tomorrow, but now they're taking place on Wednesday, September the 23rd. So for those of you in that Rodanthe, Way, Salvo, and Avon area, you'll understand due to the fact that NC-12 is closed. So County Manager, that ends my chairman's comments.
Yes, sir. Item two on the agenda is public comment. We'll take a break just a second to see if we get any public comment. Item three is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financing reporting, and Mr. Chairman, I think you're going to make that presentation.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. At this time, I'd like to recognize our finance director, Mr. David Clausen, and assistant finance director Sally DeFosse. This comes as no surprise to any of us. In 1945, the Government Finance Officers Association established what was known as the Annual Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program to encourage local governments to take complex financial information and produce a comprehensive annual financial report, better known as a CAFR, that provides citizens with a document that is accessible and easy for everyone to understand. Even those who are unfamiliar with finances, governments that are able to meet the high standards of the program are then recognized by the association. This marks the 29th consecutive year that Dare County has received this prestigious certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, earning recognition every year, every year since David Clausen began serving as the county's finance director. David's leadership on Dare County's financial matters is second to none and outstanding. From fund balance to investments to auditing procedure, he has his finger on the pulse of all the county's finances. David, thank you for your efforts, and I have something I'd like to present to you in just a moment when I come down front, but I'll do that in just a moment, but I'll recognize our assistant finance director as well, Sally. David has certainly put together a heck of a team in the finance department. Sally serves, as I've said earlier, Assistant Finance Director, and she accomplishes much of the hands-on work with the budget and financial reporting. She's the person primarily responsible for preparing and compiling the reports that are being recognized for meeting very high standards. Sally, it's my honor to present you the Certificate of Financial Reporting Achievement as I've done many, a number of years in the past, and I want to thank you for your efforts, and also I want to thank both of y'all for your entire staff and finance department for the excellent work that each of you and your staff do. Those interested in reviewing the documents, our financial documents can be found online at www.darenc.com. Just click on the finance department's page, and you can access the county's award-winning CAFR. I urge everyone to take the time to learn about the county's strong financial health. It's a top priority for this board, and it's something that we take very, very seriously and something that we're very proud of. So I'd like to come down and present both of you with those honors at this time. Every year, this thing gets heavier and heavier, and we're running out of spots on here, David, but this piece of marble with this plaque on it, it's Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's presented to the county of Dare, North Carolina. So we're going to have to end up getting a second plaque in a couple of years, Dave, because this thing, congratulations. Once again, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. Sally, come on up, if you will, and you're probably running out of space on your wall, aren't you? This is Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to Sally DeFosse, Assistant Finance Director, County of Dare, North Carolina, by the Government Finance Office Association, United States and Canada. It's dated August 25th, 2020, by the executive director, Christopher Morell. So once again, I don't, you're probably using this for wallpaper in your office. Come on in here.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item four. This is a resolution opposing offshore drilling and seismic testing, and I'll turn that back over to you.
Thank you. I had requested that we add this resolution once again for the board to reconsider, but it had a little bit of a different twist to it in that we wanted to add that the Dare County Board of Commissioners reaffirmed its opposition to offshore drilling, including exploratory drilling and seismic testing. But we wanted to add in that resolution to urge the president to extend the moratorium that he recently had extended to South Carolina and Georgia, just like he had did, had done to Florida earlier, from the threat of offshore drilling and seismic testing. And I'm pleased to announce that we don't have to do this resolution. Just this afternoon, late this afternoon, about around 3:30, I received a phone call from Senator Tillis's representative and said that the senator had been successful today, had spoke with the president, and was informed that North Carolina will be included in a presidential moratorium withdrawing new leases for offshore oil and gas development for the next 12 years. Under the order, the leases for the purpose of offshore development are prohibited between July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2032. Senator Tillis had made a statement that over the last several years, I've listened to mayors and elected officials from Brunswick to Carytuck County and have been adamant that any decision on new energy production off North Carolina's coast should be made with the input of local communities. Following the announcement of an offshore drilling moratorium, I urge the president to include North Carolina, and I want to thank President Trump for including North Carolina in the moratorium and listening to the concerns of North Carolinians on the coast. So I want to, I said this to Senator Tillis's representative who called me to please express our appreciation to the senator, and we're grateful that the president has taken this step. So we do not have to sand off and, once again, to approve a new resolution. This is welcome news, so.
Very much so.
County Manager?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item five, and I wasn't going to let you get out of here without a resolution or a proclamation. September 20th is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I have a proclamation that effect, and I'll read it would like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Whereas suicide is a huge but largely preventable public health issue, and is the temp leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the number of deaths by suicide continues to grow in our country, our state, and in Dare County, whereas in 2019, Community Health Needs Assessment identified suicide as the eighth leading cause of death among residents in Dare County and the second leading cause of death in the age group of 20 to 39 years of age. Whereas for every suicide death, there are numerous family and friends whose lives are devastated emotionally, socially, economically, and whereas a lack of awareness, understanding, and stigma is prevalent globally in our nation and within our community, whereas the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services is committed in its effort to promote awareness, understanding, and reduce the stigma associated with suicide. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Dare County hereby adopts this proclamation in support of Dare County Department of Health and Human Services in its quest to promote suicide awareness and prevention. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Dare County does hereby proclaim September 2020 Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Dare County, and urges its citizens and interested groups to promote awareness of this debilitating public health issue and reach out to someone with kind words of inspiration that may save a life. In witness whereof, I've set my hand and seal, and cause the seal of the county to be affixed. This the 21st day of September 2020.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve this proclamation that's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. The floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, likes, and? Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, item six on the agenda is an update to the county travel policy. The policy, as you see in your thing, hasn't been updated in a number of years, and some issues have come up over the months that led us to the policy and to try to figure out how to resolve the issues, and it became apparent something that needed to be done. So Dave has taken on that, and I'll turn the podium over to him to tell you what the changes are and why we made them.
Thank you, Dave. Welcome back.
Thank you. And as Bobby said, it's mainly because things have changed. It's changed since we last revised this, and it's mainly related to airline travel, and then we found some things that we had not addressed in our policy. Things like different fare types, we never said what fare type we expect the employee to book, whether we wanted to refundable versus non-refundable, how many checked bags we would pay for, and then things that we didn't address, we found out in March that our policy didn't address what happened with travel cancellations. You know, and I made a decision, and we took care of things, but other things that we found in going through other policies are just situations that had come up in the past, like staying an additional night travel that lowers the airfare, and as long as the hotel and per diem cost is less than what you save in the airfare, well, you know, if it's lower in total, fine. And then hotel provided breakfast, we always deducted off the per diem, but our policy didn't say that we were to do that. We've taken this through, I have got three people in my department now that have worked on travel and then accounts payable, so it's been through all of them, through Sally, through Elizabeth, HR Director, myself, and Bobby, so these are the recommended changes that we have for you. The major things are in section 2.2.3, it just clarifies that where the point of departure is for a mileage claim and clarifies that it applies to all appointed boards and committees. In that second bullet point for that section, I discovered, apparently just through history, we have two boards out of 27 that had been paid travel from that member's home to this building to attend the committee. And what we're proposing is to eliminate that as of January 1st, and it'll make it the same for all the 27 boards and committees. It eliminates that payment for the planning board and the game and wildlife commission. Then in section 3.1.1, that the county pays for non-refundable airfare, we did some research on that, and the thinking is that you have a year for the trip to be taken, and the refundable is so much more expensive than the non-refundable, that any upgrades would be paid by, oh, that we do non-refundable coach class airfare, and any upgrades will be paid by the traveler. Then we've got a section that there can be extenuating circumstances depending upon the judgment of the, what we call the approving party, whether that's the department head or the county manager. Number of checked bags depends upon the length of the sta- Number of checked bags depends upon the length of the stay. I think we plagiarized that from another travel policy that we found, that the county pays for the cost of cancellations if it's for the convenience of the county or beyond anybody's control. That that additional night stay is allowed if the grand total cost is less. We didn't have anything in the policy about getting bumped on a air trip. And this will say that the traveler can keep that compensation, but it's got to be for the convenience of, well, it's got to be, not be an inconvenience to the county. For example, if it results in an extra day stay, the traveler's responsible for their meals. And say if it's during the middle of the week, it happens on a Tuesday, and they're supposed to be working on Wednesday. Well, if they don't get to work till Thursday, they have to take a leave day on Wednesday, if it's voluntary. Tolls are reimbursable. You can drive a county vehicle through an electronic toll booth. In 4.1.1, we have a section that said hotel cost had to be reasonable. We didn't have anything in there that said what happens if the approving party thinks it's not reasonable, so our backup is going to the General Services Administration rate for that area. And then, yeah, if breakfast is provided by hotel, it's not part of your per diem. So, we're asking the board to approve those changes.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I have a.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Or, I'd like to make a point. I traveled for a living for 15 years. There is something in the airline travels that you didn't address. There is a possibility that you could fly on a charter aircraft. And if you fly a charter aircraft, there should be something in there. Say you're flying with a company that chartered the aircraft, but they want you to pay part of the flight. What you should have in here for that instance is that that seat on that charter aircraft should be paid out at the same rate as a non-refundable seat that would be on a commercial aircraft.
Okay.
That's the only, I mean, I really went through this carefully because I lived that life for a long time. And that was the only thing that I could think of that you guys didn't address.
If it's acceptable to the board, if that's clear enough, I can just add it to the, to our pre-version.
Is that pleasure of the board?
I'm good with it.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anybody else see anything else in this plan that we need to address? Was that the only item, Jim?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought the rest was pretty good.
All right, then. With that being said, the pleasure of, Danny, did you have any questions?
No, I agree with Jim. That was a good call.
Okay, thank you. Then the pleasure of the board would be?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor then to approve the.
I'll second it.
Changes as submitted by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you.
When would, would these go into effect immediately?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We're not doing a lot of travel reimbursement.
Yeah, I knew time to do it. Right. I didn't think you were.
And I, you're correct. We didn't, never thought, never occurred to me that anybody would charter a flight. It's never come up before, so.
It does happen.
Yeah.
Good job on that.
Item seven is the change to the C COVID-19 Relief Fund Plan Amendment Grant Project Ordinance. And Dave, if you'll stay right there and do that one, please.
Right. There's really two, two things that we're asking to change the plan for the North Carolina COVID Relief Fund. On the 11th, the state sent out a memo saying that as of the 15th, FEMA, we've been, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. We've been filing for reimbursement for, with, from FEMA for all of our personal protective equipment, cost of cleaning, sanitizing, things like sneeze guards, anything to do to comply with the public health directives. As of the 15th, FEMA is no longer in that business unless it's for a first responder. So, we're okay for the EMS, for Sheriff's Department, for medical portions of the Health Department. But things like bomb center, dare center, parks and rec, anything we do in this building or even the courthouse is not eligible anymore. Our estimate for that is $71,063. The second part of this change is, and it's the same effect upon the Board of Education. They want to purchase what they call check stations, one for each, I think it was one for each school. And the total for that is $86,937. The way they explained it to me is it takes, it's a walkthrough device, takes a picture, determines if the person's wearing a mask, and takes and records the temperature. And then there's different methods they can have for notification, I think, including text and email, or just a noise or some kind of alarm right then and there as it happens. And they can choose which ones they want. What happened with that same September 15th FEMA date, this would have been FEMA eligible as emergency protective measures. But again, it's just, as of the 15th, it's just for first responders, so that does not include the, any reopening cost of schools. So, what we're asking you to do is to change our plan and reduce what we had claimed for Health Department salaries and fringes by $158,000. Add $71,000 for our PPE cleaning and sanitizing. Add at the bottom of the plan $86,937 for the Dare County school system. The revised plan is in here. I asked the school system to provide a list of what grant funds, well, or pass-throughs they'd received through NCDPI. And they've received $1,318,000, but all of it are, there's maybe 12, 13 different pots, and they're all very specific as to what they can be used for. And these check stations don't meet any of those requirements for the funds that they've gotten so far. There's also included an amendment to the budget, to the grant ordinance. And one thing I did in there is I added that the legal budget level of control is the total grant because I've already done, every report I filed since July, I have amended at least one time. I'm going to go back after this and amend the July one for the third time. What's going to happen is this stuff has to be spent by the end of the day on December 30th. Well, if we've only spent $65,000 on this cleaning and sanitizing instead of 71, which is our estimate, what I can do on that very last day is go back and claim Health Department salaries and fringes so we don't have to send any of the grant money back. And just adding that sentence into the grant ordinance will give me the ability to do that. So, what we're asking you to do is to approve the revised plan, version three, and the amendment to the grant project ordinance, and authorize the county manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the school system, which I've drafted as exactly the same interlocal agreement we use for each of the towns.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any questions today?
Yeah, I got a question, Dave, regarding the check stations.
Sir.
I know this is being done with regard to COVID. Hopefully, with the vaccines and whatnot that are going to be available, hopefully, we're going to be able in the next year or so to address everything that's going on with COVID. But can these, is the intent of the school to leave these check stations up? I mean, I can see them, if they're going to do a temperature check, it could certainly happen during a flu season. If kid comes to school and he's got a high temperature for whatever reason, infection or whatever, it could be, it could be usable. Do you know what their plan is in that regard?
I do not know.
That's, that's something that, I mean, I can see this thing being used past COVID-19 to, you know, get a sick kid out of school. Well, you know how flu does. But anyway, that was.
That point well taken.
It's just a question.
On the, on the same preference of the check stations, is it, my understanding, they're going to do one for each school?
That's.
Because that'd be kind of hard to get all the students to go through one entrance. You know, it would back up the line quite a bit in going through.
All the communication I had was it, I should back up and said for each school, so I do not know that either. I do not know that either.
But the amount of money they need for whatever they're doing is the number that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah, it's for each school, so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board with this item?
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin moved to approve the second about the vice chair? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, item eight on the agenda involves the Buxton Harbor. Some of you may recall that we own a little piece of property in there. You've got a map in your brochure, in your packet. And we own by deed the piece right adjacent to Highway 12 inside the red lines. And it's a very small piece of property. It's too small to build anything on. It's too small to put a boat ramp on. It's too small, really, to do much of anything. We've owned it a long time. We own it because back when the harbor was dredged, the only way you could get dredge money was if a local government owned property adjoining the dredging. And so, someone gave us that piece of property so that there was a local property owner in there so they could dredge it, and it got dredged. And so, over the years, for whatever reason, there are multiple surveys. The boundaries are all messed up in there. We've talked about this before. And the last time we talked about this, we tried to figure out what to do with it. One of the options was to try to just dispose of it because we didn't really have a use for it, or to try to see if there was a way we could turn it into a boat facility, a boat launch facility. We had, if you're looking at the map, I guess that's to the west, to the left side of the property there. There's a parcel that is owned by Joe Man, and we talked to him several times about the opportunity to buy his parcel to join with that parcel to see if we could make it into a public boat launch facility. We got Wildlife Resources Commission down to try to look at it with us to see if that was a viable option. And the answer was, it was not. There were a number of reasons why, not the least of which was it was just too small, even with the acquisition of the adjoining property. And so, nothing came of that. You all asked me to try to make some efforts to sell it. Neither of the adjoining property owners wanted to buy it. I did have contact with one doctor who was willing, who was looking at buying it as a place to dock his boat, but that fell through. He wasn't really interested when it was all said and done, when he got down there and looked at the harbor and all that. We've continued going back and forth with the adjoining owners. And recently, the owner to the right of the larger parcel to the, which would, I guess, be to the east, but he came back, and we talked about him buying, again, the little parcel that we own out on the road. He came back to us recently with an offer for the area that's out at the point of the harbor in, in yellow. That's the area that the county owns because when the harbor was dredged, it wasn't dredged exactly in the bounds of what was shown on the early surveys and all that, and survey errors or whatever the reasons are. But on, on our records, we own that piece that sticks out there. We don't have any access to it. It's fill area. We don't have any use for it. We can't do anything with it. And he would like to have it to add to his property there. Had offered us $20,000 for it. I told him that I didn't know if we could or couldn't accept $20,000. I didn't know what the value was, and that he should have it appraised and make me an offer, and I would bring it to you all. He did that. He had an appraisal done. That appraisal came back at $20,000. He'd already had it done, so he knew what it was worth. I sent the appraisal over to our appraiser over in our tax office and asked him to review it and see if he agreed. Was that an appropriate value for that piece of property? And he said that it was. He said that, given that there's no access, there's no use, there's no market, the only market there is for that piece of property, if we were ever going to sell it, would be that person because there's no way other to get to it, and that would be a correct value in his mind as well. And so, from that perspective, the question before you all is, you know, are we prepared to sell that piece of property out there on the point to the adjoining owner for the $20,000, which is the appraised fair market value of that property? If you are, then we need to do several things. We need to declare the property surplus. You need to approve the offered price. You need to authorize us to move forward. And then you need to adopt a resolution pursuant to NCGS 168-269, which declares the property surplus and authorizes county staff to move forward to sell the property through the upset bid procedure at that price. And what that means is you would advertise it. We plan to sell it for $20,000. It goes out, it publicizes in the papers. Anybody that wanted it could come in and bid higher than that and make an upset bid. And if they did, that upset bid would remain open for 10 days, and the original offerer could up it again, or somebody else could, and it would keep going until it remained open for 10 days, and we didn't have an upset bid. I'm looking to see, make sure you had 10 days. If, and once we don't have an upset bid, then that becomes the final price. At that point, we come back, and you all can accept or reject any number that comes through at the end of the upset period. If you would then accept that number, then we would go through and move forward to execute the documents to convey our title to whoever the buyer of that property would be. Again, presumably, it would be the offeror because we don't know that we would get any other bids for it. So, that's where we are, and we need you all to give us guidance. And if the guidance is to move forward, then to take action as I just described.
Thank you, Bobby. Any questions, Bobby? So, I got, so Bobby, so you're cutting the yellow piece out from the total piece of property, correct?
Correct.
And so, this does not include the piece on the road?
It does not. Now, I'll tell you that he came back to me. His attorney came back to me on Friday. I got a call. And said, would we, are we still willing to sell the piece on the price? I said, we are. He said, well, how much do you want? I said, well, I don't know. Get it appraised and bring me the appraisal. I'll have our appraiser look at it. If our appraiser agrees that whatever that value is, I'll submit that to our board, and the board can tell me if they're willing to sell it or not. And he said, I will talk to my client. So, it may be that he'll come back with that. He may not. I don't know. But so far, we haven't had any luck disposing of it.
Any other question?
Yeah, I've got several comments. One, it's, it's on our tax record books, a total value of $318,400. There's miscellaneous value of $84,000. I believe that miscellaneous value, since there are no buildings on any of it, is probably bulkhead. So, if this is a bulkheaded piece of land, it's more valuable than 20 grand, in my opinion. The other thing is, we're, we're taking an overall piece of property that does have access to a highway because you could access that landlocked thing by boat if you wanted to. And, I don't know, my personal opinion is 20,000 is pretty much a lowball figure on it. I, I don't know where the appraiser came up with it. When we've got something on the tax record book at $318,000, and it comes back at 20 for the majority part of the land.
So, the $318,000, for the most part, is assigned to the piece of property on the road, according to Hosey. And clearly, it's not worth $318,000. There is no way in the world you could ever sell that property for anything close to that. And so, I ask him to look at the value and tell me what it was because you all needed to be sure that you made the right decision for the county. And fair market value is what a reasonable buyer will pay, and a reasonable seller will sell when not under duress. And so, by doing this through the upset period, we'll know because if it's worth more, somebody will bid more. There's value for it. And if there's not, then there's not value. Hosey, when he went through and did the appraisal on his own on just the piece that they're offering, we were within $1,000 of the same number as what he came up with. So that 20,000, he thinks is a legit appraisal. I talked to him about the 318 number on that and how did he get it? And he said that takes into account, using all the factors, if you had, if you own the bottom of the harbor and you control all the water and all those kinds of things, and, and, and we don't do any of that. I mean, that's public water. If anybody can drive down that waterway and do it, they come down and hook on to our property, which is fine. We haven't ever excluded anybody. So he, he'll tell you if you ask Hosey that that $318,000 number is not right. It's not, it's way too high for that property. You've got an unbuildable, unusable, the only value that it has is if someone like the doctor that I talked to was looking for a place to dock a boat, then that would be a place he could do that, as long as his boat would fit against that dock. But then he can't really do anything on the dirt part of it, he can't build anything, he can't do anything there as well. The bulkhead, as you spoke, on the left side of property is in really bad shape and disrepair. The bulkhead on the right side is the bulkhead that's owned by that, that property owner, whatever bulkhead's there, he put there. It wasn't bulkheaded by us ever. We didn't spend money on bulkhead. So I don't know if that changes anything, but that's just how we got where we were.
The other question I had is, is that not a spoil site? For dredge spoils?
I think that's how it was created. I think that tip out there was created for that spoil site, for that harbor.
And would it be needed in the future as a spoil site?
If we were ever to dredge that harbor, it would need a spoil site, but there is no public use of that harbor at the moment. I say that, that's not true. There is public use because some of the fishermen do tie up on our property, put their crab pots or their nets or whatever out on our property temporarily and go do other things. So there is some public use of, of our park, but it's not like a public marina. So whether we would ever spend the money to dredge it or not would be a decision y'all have to make.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Danny, you have any, anything to add? Since then, you're back.
I do, uh, yes. Received a couple of calls that were expressing concern on letting that piece go. Their, their concern was, is that this has been a project that's been going on for about 30 years trying to get Buxton them access, not to give away any of our water access, but a couple of points in calling around and talking to some community leaders here, excuse me, is that there comes a point where there's diminishing returns on the effort, the time and the money we're spending trying to cram a round peg in a square hole on this. If the Water Resources Commission is not going to partner with us, if the surrounding properties have some title issues, we've gone, we're, we're going to get to a point here where some of this surplus property that we have, we're going to be faced with, that, there comes a time when you just have to make a decision about whether or not it's worth holding on to. And I do share those concerns with this particular piece of property, that we don't want to be giving up water access. I understand that. But we have, we've given our advocacy on things like this to and from the Dare County Water Waste Commission. This has not come up on our radar. I don't see that we're going to, this board is going to walk away from its commitment to water access. But in regards to the process, and we've been going on for well over 20 years, it's probably approaching 30 years, and we're, we're not getting anywhere. There's no parking there. The guys were just in no, in no position to be spending, in, in my opinion, that kind of money to dress that place up when it, when it is not a good fit. We've got COVID things we're dealing with, we've got problems trying to get kids proper childcare, not just on Hatter Island, primarily on Hatter Island, it's a very amplified need right now, but also countywide. So do we spend the kind of money it's going to take to dress that up for a limited amount of users when that money could go somewhere else? So I am concerned about what the board thinks, I am concerned about what the public thinks. But there, there comes a point where, on some of the surplus property we've had all these years, it's time to take a good look whether or not we want to keep pounding ourselves in the head trying to make some things work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any additional questions concerning this potential sale of this property?
Danny, I got a question for you. You were kind of mumbled in there off and on. Do you advocate for selling the property, or do you not?
In this case, Commissioner Bateman, I do, and I'll tell you why. Because I think we have spent too much time trying to make this work, and it's not going to work for any of our needs. It's landlocked, it is fill. I grew up, I learned how to swim in that very channel. It, it has, it has no value to us. It, it's surplus property that we're going to have to, that we can part with and not lose any, anything of consequence. I do not have a problem with letting it go.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just think it should be sold entirely, the whole thing, instead of, because we're still going to end up with a piece of property there.
One last thing I didn't include, because you just said that reminded me of it. If you recall, when we talked about this several times previously, the, the boundary lines, because of the way it was ultimately dredged and the way it was ultimately surveyed, are all messed up. What, what it was designed to be was a straight harbor that went out, and the piece at the end on the road was our piece, and there wasn't going to be any remnant pieces hanging over the edge or anything like that. And so it was never intended that we own pieces on either side of the harbor all the way out to the sound, if you go back and look at the old surveys and the old maps. It has turned out that way because of the way things were done back then, the way surveys came out, the way the dredging was done and all that. So again, what you're being asked to dispose of isn't something that we ever were intended to have owned. That doesn't mean that we don't own it, but that boundary line is not for certain down that side, and, and the reason we were disposing of the property is because it had no value, that's how our original thoughts were, it had no value to us, and the cost and expense to litigate the two boundary lines to get them straightened out wasn't worth what the property was worth. And we had made multiple efforts through multiple county attorneys, but before me, and me before I came on staff, and me again several times after I became on staff, to try to get all those parties together and get those boundaries straightened out. We went so far one time as to say, if you'll just meet with us, let's get the boundary straight, we'll give you what you think you own. And we couldn't get them to the table even with that offer. And so either we do something and we get it straight, or we don't. It, it, I guess if we don't do anything, we're not out anything. We're not doing it for the money, we're doing it to get the boundary straight, to solve it down there so we don't have to keep dealing with boundary problems. But if we did not, we don't have a problem, the, they have the problem, the adjoiners have the problem because their property, if they want to market it, becomes problematic because they don't have their boundary straight. So this will be one step towards getting some of that stuff straight, if that's what we want to do.
And Bobby, the, the, the key portion also is, what you mentioned earlier, is that the more or less square portion up at the, at the east end of that property is what fishermen are using right now. They pull up into the dock, put their nets off or crab pots off, and then they come back and pick those up and distribute them. But basically, that's how that property is used, and there's, that, that's not included in the sale.
That's not in this.
And that would still be a, a public use area.
It's still be just like it's always been. And if they make an offer, that would be a different decision for a different day, and there's different uses there.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we sell it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that we authorize a sale, approval offer, and approve the resolution declaring parcel as surplus property by Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second?
Second.
Is seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to item nine on the agenda, that's the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have the 2020 update of the Dare County repetitive loss area analysis, you have the tax collector's report, you have the reimbursement resolution for Series 2020 B-Lobs for the Manio High School roof project.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The second is back Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
You have one board appointment. This is the Health and Human Services Board. As you know, they serve as the policymaking, rulemaking, and administrative board for the Consolidated Human Services Agency. Under the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 153A 77, they require that after the establishment of a human services board, that board shall be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners from Nollenee, presented by the Human Services Board. The Health and Human Services Board voted to recommend to the commissioners to reappoint Janine Sewell to fill the vacant, to appoint Janine Sewell to fill the vacancy of Frank Hester.
Move to appoint Janine Sewell.
Okay, so motion on the floor by the vice chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
That be your agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 11, Commissioner's Business. And I'm going to take a little different route, addressing this this evening. I've got a, I'll, I'll start it off, if you guys don't mind, this evening. Some additional items that I'd like for us to, I sent out an email addressing these earlier in the week. There's three items I'd like for us to consider. The first item is the Federal Lands Access Program. The North Carolina Ferry Division has submitted an application to the, for the Federal Lands Access Program, which was established to improve transportation facilities that provide access to, are adjacent to, or are located within federal lands. The application will request funds to provide funding for projects and supportive channels leading to Okeechobee Island, North Carolina, such as dredging, surveying, and permitting. The project funding being applied for is critical in keeping these channels leading to Okeechobee Island open to the appropriate depths, allowing safe passage for all ferry vessels and passengers aboard, as well as an operating on a normal vessel departure schedule. The Dare County Board of Commissioners hopefully will support this application. The Ferry Division is, has asked us, you know, for their, had as well as us to support this application. And I bring this to your attention for discussion and to see if you're willing to support the Ferry's Division's application for Federal Lands Access Program.
Absolutely, yes. Move to support.
Okay, so it's been, yeah, I take that in form of a motion, Commissioner Tobin, thank you. Commissioner Tobin has made a motion that we support this, and it's been seconded by the vice chair. So any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Clerk, we'll get you to send that to, to the planning team and, and show in support of that land access program. The second, second item I have this evening is a resolution supporting terminal growings and jetties. I think I mentioned to the board that Senator, I mean Senator, Representative Murphy had reached out to me. He's also spoken to Commissioner Tobin at, at a, a separate meeting, wanting to pursue this. And he did not want to pursue this unless he had the blessing of Dare County's Board of Commissioners. And I have made a resolution, I had a resolution drawn up in support of terminal growings and jetties. This is something we've done for numerous years. Clerk, did, I don't, y'all, does the board have a copy of this in their package? Pardon? Okay, I'll, I'll get, let me, let me read this. Do we have, can we get it on the screen? Bobby, can you?
Can read it, I can't get it on the screen.
You want, Bobby, you want a copy of it?
He, Bobby's got a copy.
He got a copy, okay.
Bobby, will you read that resolution to the board?
Whereas the state of North Carolina has 320 miles of coastline and 19 inlets that are both a public trust and a significant economic resource. And whereas coastal erosion of the oceanfront shoreline is, is one of the most serious challenges facing North Carolina's coastal communities, which jeopardizes public safety and puts at risk millions of dollars of public and private infrastructure, thereby threatening the tax base that is the lifeblood of coastal local government and represents a significant part of the state's economy. And whereas Oregon inlet in Dare County on the outer banks of North Carolina serves as a vital outlet to the Atlantic Ocean and functions as a channel for the drainage of storm waters from the vast Alburol Panlico estuary system, thereby facilitating the maintenance of water quality throughout that system and reducing the impact of soundside flooding on people, property, and infrastructure. And whereas it's uncontroverted that Oregon inlet at the end of Bear Island is rapidly narrowing from the north. And whereas any condition which impedes the outward flow of water jeopardize lives and threatens property and public infrastructure, particularly during severe storm events, by causing flood level waters on soundside properties, which increase the potential of opening up one or more new and unwanted channels. And whereas rapidly narrowing and unstable inlets represent a major risk to public safety by creating navigational hazards that jeopardize lives and livelihoods for North Carolina's commercial fishermen, charter boat captains, recreation anglers, and all others who use the inlet. And whereas the problem of erosion at the end of Bear Island is unique to those areas and continues to pose a genuine threat to public beach access, public and private property, business and infrastructure, creating the risk of significant reconstruction costs and lost tax revenue. And whereas a study conducted by the North Carolina Coastal Resources Commission determined that terminal growings in combination with beach nourishment can be effective at controlling erosion at the end of Bear Island and offered a slate of recommendations for environmental and ecological safeguards that emphasize the responsible use of terminal growings as a tool to control erosion at the end of Bear Island. And whereas the state of North Carolina has in the past constructed terminal growings as an inlet management tool while ensuring proper consideration of environmental issues. And whereas millions of dollars are spent each year on dredge operations to keep the inlet navigable, which would be significantly reduced with jetted and stabilized inlets. And whereas the United States Congress in 1970 expressed the intent that the body threw a specific legislative authorization that Oregon inlet be stabilized with a dual jetty system. Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners has long advocated for inlet stabilization through terminal growings and jetties and had adopted a series of seven resolutions over the span of decades, urging state and federal officials to allow these structures as a way of safeguarding public safety and protecting North Carolina's vital coastal infrastructure. Now therefore being resolved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners continues to support protecting the shoreline of North Carolina with terminal groin and jetty projects by variance or by rulemaking and asks our state and federal representatives to support the construction of terminal groin and jetty projects along the entire coast of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners calls on our legislative delegation in Raleigh and in Washington DC as a matter of public safety and economic necessity to work collaboratively to induce, to introduce legislation that will provide for the long-term stabilization that is so desperately needed in Oregon Inlet, including but not limited to the transfer of property from the National Park Service required to anchor the jetty systems. This the 21st day of September 2020.
Move to approve. There's a motion on the floor by the Commissioner House to approve and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. I would ask the clerk if she would make sure that Congressman Murphy gets a copy of this as well as our other senators and state officials. The last item I have is the National Association of County Commissioners annually request any issues that we may have of setting legislative goals throughout the state. We've been asked by several of our smaller neighboring counties to continue to seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure broadband capabilities to the, to the unserved and underserved areas of the state, promote enhanced connectivity for all residents to ensure telemedicine, physical and mental, distance learning, promote economic development, and to help with social isolation. So, we've been asked if we would certainly adopt this as one of our requests for legislative goals by the National North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Move.
So.
I'll second that, too.
Okay, thank you. A motion then is on the floor by Commissioner House for this to support broadband as well as seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add just one thing. You know, even in Mans Harbor, we don't get good service at all. And it's a tremendous challenge to these kids that are doing homeschooling in these areas that don't get broadband and don't get good internet service at all. I mean, even my phone service, I have to go outside 90% of the time with my phone in order to talk on it. And, you know, our internet service is always hiccuping. And I, I don't know how, I truly don't understand how these families with three or four kids are trying to do their schoolwork with all that, you know, with all that time on the computers. I just don't get it. And this, this is extremely important, I think.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of making this, submitting this as one of our legislative goals as a county signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Once again, Clerk, I believe we have a deadline of when?
October the first.
October the first. So if you have any other items that you think that would, we would need to address as a legislative goal statewide, you know, please let me know and we'll certainly share that as well. That is all I have under those three additional items. Thank you for your time with that. Commissioner Couch, would you mind kicking it off this evening?
Yes, I will. Thank you. And thank you for bringing up your comments and your opening remarks about Justice Ginsburg. And I think in this era of here we are in an election season and it's rough and tumble politics, but one of the neat things about her and was her relationship with Justice Scalia. I mean, these guys, you had two people who were pretty much polar opposites on things, but it didn't get in the way of a good friendship. And I really respect, I respect her for that. And I think sometimes when we get into what we have to do to support our party and just the personal way we feel about things and within our country, that always remember that, you know, we got, we, we have to strive to get along. And I would encourage everyone and throughout the nation to remember this relationship that those two had, that we can all have that. And thanks for indulging me here with the, I would love nothing better than to have been up there today. But there's a lot of water down here. I mean, a lot. And we've, we've got a strong pressure gradient still out there. I'm looking outside right now. It's still blowing. It's abated somewhat, but of little consequence. It's overcast and with Teddy out there stomping around, we've got an astronomical tidal cycle going on here. There's just not a whole lot you can do to hold the ocean back and you just gotta find a way to live with it. We've got a lot of visitors down here. This is the first time they've ever experienced anything like that. Some of them are in shock, some of them are enjoying it, but they're only here for a week or two. We have to live here, so we deal with it the best we can. But it's, it's interesting watching where some of it is draining or not. And I've been talking some with the planning, with the planning director. And there's some ideas about trying to aid particularly here on, on the southern leg of the island here when we have these water vents. Anyway, good to see y'all. Thank you and hope you have a good week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. A thought on Tom Murphy. We had a meeting not too long ago and I made a comment in here and it was something evidently he didn't like. I noticed his face out there. His face turned, turned, he just gave me this look. And so he walked out, we took a break, and I went in there and talked to him a little bit. And I've never been cut down with such class in my whole life. But he did it, he did it very well. And so he's just a sweet guy and he put me in my place and rightfully so. Anyway, so, but it was a, it was a good conversation. But he did, he did it with class.
Yes.
You like that about people. We'll miss him. Bobby, since Jerry Jennings is gone, who is his replacement?
Sterling Baker.
Sterling? Okay, good. Well, we know Sterling.
Yeah, we know Sterling.
So, back to, I guess about a year or so ago, we talked about the rumble strips, possibly on the bridge, on the Bass Night Bridge, separation traffic. And I think what, we came to the consensus that we could not put the indentions in because it would be destroying the integrity of the surface of the bridge. But we're talking about maybe putting some sticky things down there?
Bots.
As one option. And the other option, maybe some poles? Having said that, whether we, I hope it didn't get thrown to the wayside when Jerry left?
It, it did not. They came back and did not recommend that and they, I can't remember the reason, but there were multiple reasons, not just the structure of the bridge. There was sound safety, there was a number of things and they, they did not recommend. I'm glad to go back to Sterling and ask him to reconsider.
Revisit.
Come back.
Okay. Well, how about the Juggernaut Bridge, which we're in the process of building now? And one thing they need to be concerned about and is the safety of the patrons that are going across that bridge. When I went down last, two weeks ago to Okeecoke, there are people on bicycles on that thing and, and you're looking at boats, it's a safety hazard. Just throwing that out there to you. If we can ask him again, I'd like to know the rationale and writing why he doesn't think that that's appropriate.
And you're talking about rumble strips on all the bridges or just?
Just on the, on the Bass Night Bridge and also on the Juggernaut Bridge, which are built now. It'd be, it'd be very easy for them in the building process to do something there.
Sure. I'll find out and I'll get you an answer.
Okay. Yes, just a, just a thought there. Mental health and suicide month. I, I agree with you, Jim. It's hard to get Mans Harbor, you know, sometimes and even in my house in Kitty Hawk, especially Kitty Hawk Land, you have issues with internet. Because it is suicide month and because of coronavirus, we have whatever access to psychiatrists are done virtually by the internet. You go to Port Services, you go and you're on, from your house, you have to talk to a psychiatrist in Greenville. We have no psychiatrist down here. We have them in Richmond, Virginia. We have them in Virginia Beach. I don't even think there's one in Elizabeth City anymore to travel to. So it's all over the internet. And even AA meetings, they're done on Zoom meetings. And you're in the middle of an AA meeting, if you're in crisis, whatever, and all of a sudden Zoom goes out, it's, it's not good. And so we need to have broadband down here as well as for education, but also for the mental health capabilities. We have lost quite a few people in Dare County for suicides and that's, it's, it can affect anybody at any time. Depression is a terrible thing. And we need to do everything we possibly can to make sure that they have access to those means of help. So, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Points well made. Thank you. Vice Chairman? Okay. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, my condolences to Justice Ruth Ginsburg's family and friends. She was a champion of her cause and a warrior when it came to the many different cancers that she actually overcame. I, I can't say enough about her. She's a, she was a workhorse and a strong horse in our Supreme Court and my condolences go out to them. As you well know, our flounder season, which is very short this year, is underway. It opened up on September 15th and closes on October 6th, very short window. I'm gonna keep a close eye on it. So, so far right now during that short 21 days, there's been five days where we have not been able to fish because the wind's been blowing and the, the water is too rough. I'm gonna keep a close eye on that and I'm gonna ask Director Murphy to keep a close eye on the quotas that are coming in and to see if there's a possibility of possibly, if the numbers are low enough, if we can get an extension. Because our fishermen have suffered enough with everything else that's going on this year. And like I said, flounder is one of the big seasons for them and with it being cut short is, is hard enough. And then when it gets cut even shorter because of weather restrictions and stuff like that, it's, it's, it's just astronomical financially for them and also for our local markets. And I'm sure Commissioner Bateman can agree in the restaurants. When flounders come up, the prices go up and it gets, it just encirculates a whole bunch of different ramifications. So we're gonna keep a close eye on that. And in the next, next couple of weeks, I will be calling a meeting of the Dare County Working Wilderness Commission. There are some other issues that are coming up and I want to get their input on them before I present them. Another thing is, there's been a new initiative put out, Always NC Fresh, which is putting a positive spin on our commercial fishing industry. And it's gonna be, it's already been released, it's all the way across the state. The website is alwaysncfresh.com. And like I said, it's for the commercial fishermen and the commercial fishing industry have been important in North Carolina economy, culture, and environment for centuries. There are thousands of people eating, preparing, and selling millions of pounds of seafood from our coast each year. Let us introduce them to you. And each month they've sent out on their website and they put new faces of our commercial fishermen and a little questionnaire that they fill out. And this is the first website, website that they've done this on. It's the first, first release. Matt and Micah Daniels from Juan Cheese were the first ones to fill it out and they are actually honored on their, on their website.
Cool.
And the questions they asked and the explanations that were given were spot on. It's a very positive website and I urge not only all of us to take a look at it, but I'm also gonna be sending out an email to all of our representatives in Raleigh, both in the House and the Senate, to take a look at it and so that they can see the positive impacts that commercial fishing is doing in North Carolina. Our, our day in history? In 1981, the United Nations declared this day, September 21st, as the International Day of Peace. The International Day of Peace seeks to promote peace among nations and people. Peace is recognized in both an innate state of being and a dynamic. They introduced it, like I said, established in 1981. In 2002, the United Nations declared it as a permanent holiday. So that is our day in history. Our day in history for tomorrow, which is also important, is the National Voter Registration Day. The voter administration seeks to promote voting and celebrate democracy, first recognized in 2012. This day has been used to help citizens register to vote. National Voter Registration Day is observed annually on the fourth Tuesday of September. So for tomorrow, welcome everybody to, and when you say hello to them, give them a happy National Voter Registration Day greeting. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Didn't we attempt that one time before, I recall, we attempted to try to get the flounder season extended when we had bad weather days?
Yeah, we had it, I think it was last.
Last year.
Last year. Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it did not go through, but then again, flounder season that passed last year was it, it was cut short, but it was after the, after the prime part of the season is the reason.
So you think we might have a better shot?
We might have a better shot at it this year since the, since the season is so short. And like I said, we've already missed five days and I'm keeping a close eye on it. And I think it's a good argument that if the, the number quotas are coming down.
Yeah, I sure hope that, that's the case.
And we could possibly do something.
Last year, the, the reason it stopped was at the beginning of the season when we had the storm.
Right.
The guys' poles, their, their, their found that sets and tried to get them to extend it, I think it was two weeks or something like that.
Right.
That the guys lost. So that's what it was. It wasn't because of the, the bad part of the season. The season's better when it's colder.
Well, I certainly hope we can have some successes in doing that, if that's the case. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, well, we had a Dare County, or Oregon Inlet Task Force meeting this past week and heard pretty good reports from everybody. The, I'm not gonna go into depth on it, but the Currie Tuck, well, it was here, you can always tell when the Currie Tuck's here because the wind picks up.
Yeah.
But they were able to dredge several days, but now they've gone north. The Merritt, everybody, is going to the shipyard and the Merritt will be out of service probably until 2022.
Wow.
It's, it's, I mean, not the Merritt, the Currie Tuck is going out of service after it's gone north and will be out of service until 2022. The Merritt should be back in Oregon Inlet. It's in the shipyard right now over in Mans Harbor. When it comes out, it's probably gonna go to Oregon Inlet as long as there's no other emergencies. And then the Merton, the Merton, you know, has been out of service for quite some time. The Merton is supposed to be put back in the water here in the next, hopefully it's in the water now, but as of our meeting, it was the next few days, depending on what the storm did. And the storm did miss them. So, the Merton should be here the third week of October and will be here for a while. So that's pretty good news.
Jim, what are they doing to the Currie? It must be totally rebuilt.
The Currie Tuck needs to be totally rebuilt. It's a mess.
Wow. It's past its prime.
Yeah. It's, it's, it really is in bad shape. I'd also like to say great job to Dave and Sally and their staff. I mean, what you guys do is... I mean, what you guys do is second to none. It's, it's really refreshing to know that our books and our finances are taken such good care of. And thank you for that. It really is truly great. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you lay a keel for a dredge?
You know, they're split hoppers, so you have to lay two keels.
Have, have they done that yet?
No, the, the, the Merton, or the Merton, the vessel we're building, which is like the Merton, there's about four months of engineering that has to be done. They put everything into CAD on computers and the same company that did the Merton is doing this one. So it should be quicker because they've already got a lot of it, but some things are being changed. So once that happens, right towards the end of that process, which should be three or four months, then they order steel towards the end of that process. And then everything, it's not like the old days where you have some guy with a cutting torch cutting your steel. It's all cut by plasma cutters and computers. It's fascinating. Shipyards are fascinating now. So once the steel gets there and gets cut, then they start doing the assembly and we are all welcome to go down for the laying of the keel.
Oh, cool.
And there's, there's, there will be other times, there's a pre-meeting that I'm probably gonna attend. There's some milestones that they want us there on, but certainly christening.
Yeah. Interesting. I guess now that our computer industry's here, I imagine that cuts down quite a bit of time when cutting, cutting instead of having to do it the old way.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's amazing.
It's pretty incredible. Well, good, thanks for that update. And I would like to do that once that, if, once that, see that laying of the keel, that would be pretty cool.
I agree.
You mentioned Oregon inlet, but what kind of depth we have out there now?
We had nine feet before the storm, before this storm. Actually, the controlling depth is right before, I wish I could remember the pilings. Let's see, I don't think I have it here. No. But when you're running parallel to the bridge, right before you turn to go east, the controlling depth is right there and that's about nine feet. But it's probably shoaled in some with this wind.
Gotcha.
And I know the, the Currituck had dredged some there, but the core no longer has the capability in their permits or their Fonzie to dump inside. So if they take a, they were taking a load in the morning and then going outside and dumping it off P Island, then going back and working the bar all day. Our permit that we have, that Dare County's got, we have the ability to dump inside and we also are working on getting more ability to dump inside. That's one of the things we're pushing for. But nine feet, it's nasty out there.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
It'll be interesting to see what, what it's like.
Yeah. Well, thanks, appreciate those updates.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So was the Okakokee Transportation Ferry, the one that, passenger ferry? Whatever happened to the one that they were building?
It's still being built.
Is it still being built?
That's another question for Sterling.
Okay.
When I find out about rumble strips.
You know, me and Sterling used to be friends.
Maybe we can repurpose it into rumble strips.
When he finds out I question his integrity, we're probably not gonna be friends anymore.
We've been with him too long, he'll be good.
Yeah. Don't be too hard on him, he's got some health issues.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
That brings us to managers' business. Can you imagine?
I don't really have anything, but I'd be remiss if I didn't commend Dave and his team as well. We, you all see what he does and you all see it, but I see it every day and there's probably not a day goes by that we don't talk. And sometimes that includes the weekends and, and, you know, I couldn't do what I do if I didn't have Dave and his team do what they do. And again, it, it, it shows that this award is an award for their reporting, but the reason that you can get good awards for good reporting is for doing good work every day and that's what they do. So, again, thanks Dave and Sally for all the work that you do to keep us going.
Thank you, Bobby.
Officer Dorothy Hester, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just a couple of items I wanted to mention. You mentioned the housing, the employer housing survey in opening, your opening remarks.
Yes, ma'am.
But I thought I'd let y'all know that it's been out there a week and I did get an email this afternoon that as of five, we had 248 responses.
Great.
So I think that's, that's good.
That's great.
Yeah, I think so too, so we'll keep pushing that. We have a couple of more weeks, but I thought that was good news. And then just the final push for the census. We have nine days left. We did, since I spoke last, we did get some public service announcements out in Spanish to the Spanish radio station. I do have some yard signs in English and Spanish and I'm looking at Commissioner Tobin because the mainland is our lowest area. So I'm actually gonna drop some off over in, I don't, I'm gonna try to find someone at East Lake, but maybe get one at Stumpy Point and hit Mans Harbor a little bit. So we'll try to get those numbers up a little bit for Roanoke Island and the mainland because they're, they're the area of the county that's showing the lowest response rate. But I will say the most recent response rates do show us to be right at about, I think, 83%, which was the average that the statewide goal was. So we're, we're close and we'll keep pushing for nine more days. And I would encourage anyone who might be listening, if they have not completed my 20, my 2020, my2020census.gov, you use, you go there and complete it online just using a physical address or the phone number 844-330-2020. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy, I appreciate it. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Just thank you to everybody, Bobby. And I'll, I'll definitely pass what you said along and we've got auditors here this week, so we'll find out how we're doing.
Right. Well, thank you once again, appreciate all that y'all do. Anything else become before the body this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn until 9:00 AM October the 6th by Commissioner House. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Danny.